Be held against you.
So I'll start recording in the row two as well.
Okay. I don't know where I'm now, get started.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, should I unmute this or no?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to call this meeting of the Woodland Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM on the 17th of February. The role of the planning commission is to hold workshops to review and make recommendations to the city council on all manner of policy and legislative activities. In some cases, we act as a quasi judicial board for land use cases which can then be appealed to either the council, the hearing examiner, or a court. That is not the case tonight. Janice, would you call roll?
Yes. Brian Mattson.
Present.
Tel Jensen.
Yep.
Shana Gothorn.
Here.
Sam Nygro. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Um, at this time, we'll take public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody present want to talk about something not on the agenda? Okay. And it doesn't look like we got anybody online, so we'll move on. Um, next up is approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
All right. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any changes anyone wants to see? The order of our hearings makes sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Um, let's take a vote then. All those opposed to, wait, pardon me, let me start again. Is anyone opposed to approving the agenda as written? Okay. Motion passes. Next up, we have a public hearing on housing in the commercial zone. This is a hearing to consider ordinance 1505 for amending the Woodland Municipal Code for how residential mixed uses are regulated in commercial zoning districts. And the public record is now open. I'm going to ask everyone in the commission if they have any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest that you might need to declare.
Please sit.
And neither do I. So I think we can move on to a staff presentation.
I'm sorry, are you ready for staff presentation or are you gonna? Okay. Okay, so the first item on the, the first hearing on the agenda for today is zoning text amendment 2022 number three, and it's the public hearing for the residential uses in the commercial zone. So we've been talking about this, there's been a moratorium in place since secondly, this June of last year, and we've had some discussions to talk about this. So the way the presentation is set up tonight is I wanted to first cover the work plan and then do a little history and work going forward. So this is the work plan that we had agreed upon early last year or mid last year after the moratorium went into place. We had talked about doing a workshop in January, but we'd actually were ahead of schedule, so we had scheduled that as a hearing, but we didn't have a quorum. So the hearing is February 17th, which is actually what the original plan was, so we're still on the work plan. And the idea is, is that if you make a recommendation tonight, it will go to the planning, or the city council at the next available agenda, which should be March 7th with either first reading on the 7th or the 21st or April. So we're still within our work plan that you have approved. So the presentation tonight, what I was going to do is, because this is now a formal public hearing, I wanted to repeat the workshop discussion that kind of got us to where we were, so that everybody who might be watching at home or watching this video later would be able to, would be able to understand where we were coming from, how we got here, and then the actual language, which is in the attached draft ordinance number 1505. That's really where you will have the opportunity to expand on what I thought you had, the direction you had given me at the workshop. So again, I will try and go through this relatively quickly, but I want it to be comprehensive so people are up to speed. So the reason why we're talking about this tonight is there are compatibility issues with an issue that's in the code, and that is, do we want residential uses outside of the C1 zone? Should RV parks be considered residential? Should gold jobs prevent the presence of residential uses in a commercial zone? Density versus floor area ratio, bottom floor commercial minimums, lot coverage maximums, setbacks. There were parking issues that we had discussed, height limits, and other potential impacts for other environmental impacts. So I'll go over to those in a little more detail. So the reason why this came up is because in our C1 commercial zone, we currently allow for dwelling units under Use 10 and 52 mostly, and Use number, I think the next page is 20, yeah. So in the downtown commercial core, what our zoning currently says is that you can have residential if you're off of certain streets like those are, or Davidson and Goreg, I should say. And you can have it above commercial uses that are allowed in the C1 district. And in some cases, you can have ground floor residential. And we made some changes to our C2 zone. We changed one, one section of our C2 zone, our highway commercial zone, from compliance with the C3 zone, to compliance with the, or consistency with the C1 zone. So when we corrected that error in the C2 zone, we created this problem where it theoretically allowed for, opened the door for ground floor residential in the C2 zones, because basically all of the highway commercial property is not on Goreg or Davidson. So it endangers our ability to meet Growth Management Act and comprehensive plan goals simply because the possibility of residential developments occurring in our commercial zone could prevent us from being consistent with our complan. So some of the issues that we discussed were, we have goals for jobs in our commercial and our industrial districts, and the question was, while we're looking at this mixed use zoning code, do you want to consider job creation rates? And I did not include that in the ordinance that I wrote, because the feedback I got was that's a policy issue, not a zoning code issue. So you did not want to address the zoning, or the job targets in the comprehensive plan, because it wasn't what we were discussing. Next thing we talked about is, should RV parks or should RVs be considered residential uses? Our code currently says that RVs can be occupied up to 90 days, and the question was, do you want to explore this as to whether or not RV parks are a residential use, or do you consider them a commercial use? And in the ordinance that I presented tonight, I did not include any language, because the direction I got from you was RV parks are commercial, and that we will not, do not want to regulate them as residential uses. Also, are there any commercial uses that shouldn't be paired with mixed use developments? So in other words, the residential up above, do we want to lay out what uses can or cannot be considered consistent? And is it defensible and can it be enforced? So if that is in the code, we'll get to that. Residential uses, review the C1 and the C2 permitted uses and ask yourself, if you have residences on the upper floor, what commercial uses are not compatible on the bottom floor? I'm sorry, this is a continuation of the last slide. There's also some compatibility and density issues, the way our code loophole is currently structured. Our multi-family zones have density limits of 25 or 35 units per acre, but our commercial code does not talk about density. And the question is, did you want to address a units per acre density? Or were you content with the idea that a floor ratio of, say, one, one-to-one residential commercial or a, is there another way for you to think that you achieve density? So I've got some examples of that, and I'll get to those in a few minutes. Commercial zones, again, no density standards. The height limits, in the C2 district, you can go up to 45 feet unless abutting a residential district. In the C1 district, you can go three stories or four stories up to 45 feet with a conditional use permit. So it is possible to get up to four stories in both zones. In our residential zones, it's a 35-foot height limit. But the issue that came up, and that is, if you're going to have commercial on the ground floor of residential up above, what we wanted to ensure is that the ground floor commercial space allowed for different types of occupancy. So a retail occupancy or a mercantile occupancy versus an assembly occupancy, like a restaurant. So if you wanted a restaurant to come in on the bottom floor of one of these buildings, the bottom floor had to be tall enough that you could have fire hoods and fire sprinkler systems above, whether it's fryers or broilers, that we had to make sure that there's enough space, whereas in strict residential construction code, you might only have 80, 80, 80, and you can't put anything in there other than office space. If there's no takers for occupancies for office space, those commercial spaces are going to stay empty while the residential's are rented out. So that was a concern. So some examples is, this is what we talked about, having a one-to-zero ratio. In this case, it is a single story of commercial with no additional floors above it. This is an example of a one and a one. You can see that there's a very tall commercial space on the bottom with some apartments up above. This is an example, in this case, it's not a commercial residential, but it's a three-story, what I'm calling a one-to-two, that fits under the 35-foot height limit that we were talking about. And this is a more traditional one-to-three, so one story of commercial with three story of residential above it. And in these types of cases, parking ratios end up limiting the size of the development and the size of the units, because you only have so much room for parking, so it's going to act as a natural density limit instead of doing 25 units per acre. It's going to be based upon how much parking you can reasonably put in there. So for example, our current code says if you have a studio or one or two bedroom, you're only required to have 1.5 spaces per unit. And if it's a three-bedroom or larger, then you have to have two spaces per unit. So at some point, you're going to have a developer who will find a happy medium when they're looking at density, because the size of the lot is going to limit how much parking you can put in there, therefore, there's going to be a natural density limit for each commercial property. And then the last couple issues were that we discussed, and that is, having residential uses in a commercial district, there are other impacts that are not normal, normally covered under our commercial zoning code. So for example, maximum lot coverage. In the residential zone, we have a 50% lot coverage, but in the commercial zone, you can pave it from property line to property line for parking and structure and landscaping and stormwater. It's essentially all used, and there is no open space considered. Also, there's no setbacks in the commercial zone, and the question was, are you okay with that being a natural part of a mixed use development? There's also some general environmental impacts like pedestrians and vehicle traffic, whereas in a commercial site plan, you're going to have a parking lot with drive aisles, whereas in a residential subdivision, what you have is public streets with sidewalks connecting the individual structures instead of an internal parking lot. Should we give credit for shared parking? Should ground floor commercial buildings have the higher ceiling standard? I mentioned that once before. So that is kind of a short synopsis of how we got to where we were. Based upon the discussions that we had in the last meeting, I'd like to direct you to your packets that you have in front of you, and for those following at home, if you go to page seven of the original packet, and what I am proposing is that we add a new section to the highway commercial zone, and it would add 1736-140, which is residential standards for mixed use commercial development. And the first section that I'm proposing to add is a permitted use section. And what you have here on page seven is a list of all of the highway commercial uses that are permitted in the highway commercial district. And the ones that I thought were acceptable to be on the bottom floor have been crossed out. So the majority of them are crossed out because they are consistent and compatible. So you look, for example, like 14, a grocery store. If there was a little tiny grocery store and they wanted to put apartments above it, that that would be a reasonable use for mixed use. Whereas some of them, like 16, which is motels, hotels, it would be difficult or it would be incompatible for us to have a hotel on the bottom floor with the apartments up above. So police stations, public parks, commercial parking lots, these are the ones that you cannot co-locate in a mixed use zone. And that's based upon, we went through this item by item at the workshop, and these seem to be the ones that you had identified as not being compatible. I would also like to point out that you have one other document in front of you that is not available at home or on the website, and it is, looks like this, it has my writing on the top. And what I realized is, while I went through that list of C2 uses, the highway commercial uses, I did not do that for you for the downtown core zoning district. And so what you have in front of you is section 17.32.020. That is our existing commercial code for our C1 zoning. And very similar to what I did before, is all of the stuff that I thought was consistent for a mixed use, crossed it out. And the only ones that are highlighted here are the ones that are inconsistent with doing a mixed use. So electrical vehicle charging stations, number 11, number 21, home occupations, you can't do a residential home occupation on the bottom floor and have apartments above it. Motels, motels, hostels, live work units, those are other types of uses that you can't have those on the bottom floor with residential up above. So that's 21, 22, 24. And then on the back of that sheet is 28, again hazardous waste treatments and storage facilities, that's probably not the use that you want in a mixed use building. 37, 38, and 40. And then 51, 52. So again, those were the uses that I felt were consistent with what we had talked about last time, and so we want to get into that. So before I move on, do you want to talk about these two lists and make sure that I have captured what you, what you instructed me before? Or do you want me to finish my presentation so you can move into the public testimony section before you start the conversation?
I don't have any, I don't have any strong feelings about not including or including any of the stuff on here that you've already done. I'm fine going forward.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we might, we might have some discussion later on, but I think, I think, sorry.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So the next slide is 1736-140B, and it's specifically prohibited use. And this section basically says, if you're not a permitted use, you are a prohibited use. So this is to make sure that if there's a creative interpretation of something that's on that other list, and it's not what we had intended for a compatible mixed use development to include, then we probably shouldn't have it in there as an option. So that's kind of a putting sideboards on the code section. Okay, section 140C. This section specifically says that there are going to be the regular highway commercial design standards. So we expect you to have a certain amount of commercial on the ground floor, but it has to have the visible glass, it has to meet the sign limits, it has to meet the architectural design standards, that those are still applicable, even though three quarters of your building or three floors of your building might be residential, it still has to meet the architectural design standards and the character of our commercial zone. Section two of, or C2, is about ground floor commercial rules. And in this section, I tried to express the fact that the ground floor has to be primarily commercial in nature, and that we want active commercial. We will allow up to 10% of the ground floor to be used for residential uses. This is for lobby, maybe a small desk or a security desk, for mailboxes, and for stairways or elevator, that there is going to be some access to the residential area on the ground floor, but we want that limited to 10%. I also added a caveat for if there's a ground floor utility room, or elevator room, or garbage utility chute, that an additional 5% of the ground floor can be used for utilities and mechanical equipment that services the residents. But what that ensures is that 85% of the ground floor of the structure is used for commercial uses. I do note down below in that, and that is, there are cases where an applicant could argue, if I need an elevator, and elevators have to meet ADA, which means they have to have so much space on the bottom floor, it might end up being 18% of the ground floor. But I have to recognize that the building code and the ADA code might trump our concern about commercial uses on the bottom floor. So I threw in a caveat that said applicants can ask for less commercial space if they can justify it to a conditional use permit process. So that requires public engagement, it requires public notice, it requires convincing the hearings examiner that it's consistent with the intent of what we're trying to do here and making those commercial spaces smaller. But it gives them an option to make that argument. So C3 is, discusses having no density limit. Again, the instructions that I took from you, and that is, one level of commercial and up to three stories of residential, seems to be a consistent standard that you would accept, provided that it meets the parking standards. And I threw in a couple of flexibility issues that we had talked about, and that is the idea of allowing for compact spaces and shared uses, with the idea that theoretically, if you have a ground floor tax office, the customers are going to be there during the day, but when the tax office is closed, those spaces are going to be empty, so theoretically the tenants can occupy those spaces. But I put some sideboards by limiting it to 20%, so that way we're not using all of the commercial space, all of the commercial parking for residential spaces, because during COVID, if those people never leave their homes, the businesses will never have any parking spaces. So it's a 20% double dip and a 20% allows some flexibility in car size. Number four requires the height of 14 feet for flexible occupancy, as we, as we've discussed. The height limit in this case would be flexible to allow for up to four stories of structure. So you wouldn't be required to request a variance for a mixed use building, because the code allows for flexibility to accommodate interesting designs, the architectural features that are required by code, and still being able to do a four-story structure. So, and then the last one is, is there was no lot coverage standard, which meets the C2 zoning standard. 140D is the section that talks about comprehensive plan consistency, meaning that the city is concerned that we not sacrifice our commercial zoned property and having it developed as commercial zoning, because our comprehensive plan did not contemplate having mixed use developments, and we have a, an approved commercial land supply, we have approved industrial land supply, and an approved residential land supply, and we have goals for a number of units of single family and multi-family. And so our concern was, is that you needed to show that you're reasonably consistent with being able to still meet your commercial obligations while providing some extra housing benefits that aren't contemplated in the comprehensive plan. But you want to look at that language and make sure that it doesn't sacrifice our commercial land for purely residential developments. Section 140E talks about multimodal connections to the community and recreation facilities. So we don't want to create islands of these commercial developments where they can't get to parks, they can't get to sidewalks, they can't get anywhere except for, you know, the commercial district or the industrial district that they're located in. So that is an important step. And then 140F talks about whether or not residential impacts should be mitigated through SEPA. And the argument here is that if you're paying transportation impact fees, is that adequate mitigation for your transportation impacts? And this section specifically says no. So you may have to pay impact fees for transportation, but you will still have to build street frontage improvements, you will still have to build sidewalk connections, you may have to do traffic lights or traffic signs or other transportation impacts, because for Belmont Loop, for example, it's not designed for people to get to Walmart or to get to a recreation facility. So if you're doing a mixed use on Belmont Loop, it's, it's not very responsible of the city to be allowing for residential developments where the kids are forced to play in resident or commercial or industrial districts. So there needs to be a mechanism, and we wanted it, we wanted it pointed out in code that we've contemplated that there is going to be additional mitigation that may be required. And that essentially covers the presentation for ordinance fifteen oh five. And the question is whether or not you think the C one districts and the C two districts need to be married and as I put before you today.
All right, thanks Travis. Before I open up public testimony, do you have any questions to clarify? Travis? We can try asking questions later, too. Give you an opportunity. I see you looking at that list, Brian.
Well, that's what we're going to start, right? Start on the list, see if anything pops out that we think should be prohibited in addition. Because I don't disagree with Travis's thought process for the, for the things that probably should be, right?
Yeah.
On the first floor with houses above it, I just was going to look and see if there's anything else we want to add to that list and then we can get into the rest of that because I don't read the whole.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking maybe we could save that for deliberation.
Oh, okay.
Just a little later in that.
I thought we were doing that now.
About a book, man, you know me. Sean, you have any quick questions for Travis?
Not yet, no.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and open public testimony then. Would anybody like to speak in support of the applicant? Would anybody like to speak in opposition or at all? Would anybody like to talk about this? Item at all? Okay. I don't see anyone on the remote meeting, so I think we can move on. We don't need a staff response, we don't need a rebuttal. I'm gonna close the public testimony now and we can start deliberation on the commission. So, Brian, you had some thoughts about?
Okay, on C one, I just saw number forty-one, recycling collection point. It doesn't seem compatible for residential above it, but again, that's just an opinion.
Okay. And which number is that in the C one?
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-one, that's in the C one. Do it. The other one. Again, Travis, I agree with the ones that you pointed out. I'm just seeing if there's any other ones you want to lump in. That's all for the, for the list. But if you see something on there that you guys don't like, I'm not close to it.
Forty-one.
I, I did, but again, I mean.
Okay, I got, I have a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
The twenty-two, hotels, motels, and hostels. I guess I just wanted to maybe start with clarification on why that seemed incompatible.
Why, why I didn't include that on the list? So, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to get this slide presentation to come back.
I know that you, you said we were going to leave out the job creation numbers, but that is something that we did, we were cognizant of when we were looking at uses, right? Even though it's not part of the, this one is. Are you hearing me okay?
Excuse me, yes.
I'm usually pretty loud.
I am, but the recording may not give you up as well.
Okay, cool. Maybe is that, was that part of the, the reason you, you put the hotels on there or just the fact that it all looks residential?
This specifically came up because we had a, we had a pre-application conference and a consultant brought up the idea of doing an extended stay hotel. And they were going to rent the bottom floor rooms for month after month after month, and the apartments upstairs would be rented for long-term leases. And the question was, okay, is that, well, the apartments are going to be rented, so is that a commercial use? Or the question is, you know, where do you draw the line? Our code specifically says if it has a kitchen, it is a residential unit. And therefore, you can't have extended stay hotels because if it has a kitchen, even on the bottom floor, it's considered residence. In which case, it's residential over residential as opposed to commercial hotel. And just because they have a hot plate and a microwave and a partial sink, does that really mean we're just setting up ourselves to have, you know, boarding houses or flop houses or hotels or extended stay? It's going to be a lot harder for us to regulate that.
Why's it gotta be a flop house, Travis?
Single-remotepency, Travis.
It just sounds great.
Single-remotepency is a preferred number.
Consider that a dramatic effect.
That makes sense to me.
So I guess, I don't know, in that, in that situation, to me, it makes, I don't know. I feel like maybe we should say it's like, instead of saying you can't do it, just say it's gotta be like a short-stay situation on the ground floor.
What's that?
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we're to some degree already doing that. Because, you know, if you're just, instead of saying, no, you can't have residential above a, you know, a motel or a hostel or something, say it has to be like explicitly short-stay on the ground floor.
And this gets back to the same question we had with RVs, and that is how are we going to enforce? Because if they pay day by day and they stay there for a year, or they pay week by week and they stay there for a year, how am I, as the planner, going to prove or disprove a code enforcement case on that?
How would we do that in any hotel?
Well, that's a great question. In a commercial district, a hotel is regulated as a commercial use.
Right.
So in that case, they wouldn't be applying for a mixed-use development. They would be applying for a commercial development in the commercial zone, and these regulations wouldn't necessarily apply to it. On the other hand, the way the code is written, what I would, I think what I, well, and maybe, maybe we need to lay this out. But if we're talking a three-to-one ratio, one floor of commercial, three stories of residential, I might make the assumption that if they're doing a hotel, that only three-quarters of them could have partial kitchens, in which case, three-quarters of them would be considered long-stay residential units or extended stay units as long as one-quarter of them were built without, in true hotel fashion. Might be one way to look at that.
I don't know if this is an important distinction to make, but there's nothing that says they can't do restaurant on the bottom and hotels above. They're not prohibiting that at all.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just that it's hotel with residential on top. That's the only thing that they're saying.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm okay with that. I do, I do kind of agree that maybe motels, hotels, maybe they're louder at night than, than in some businesses. And, you know, maybe it isn't the best, you know, thing on the other side of the wall or other side of the floor. Maybe you'd say the same thing about a tavern, so I guess maybe that part.
Yeah, I, I, and I just, yeah, I think that's, to me, that's more an issue for a developer or a landowner to decide, like if they think they can sell that housing or not.
And in all fairness, I put it on that prohibitive list because of the exact sticky issues that you're getting into.
Okay, just you're worried about confusion and?
Yeah.
Kind of grading together, okay. Um, live-work units. I don't know, that, that, maybe it's, maybe it's a similar issue, but it seems like, you know, if we're gonna allow, if we're happy to allow live-work units.
We're still allowing it, just the?
I understand, but why not also have residential, allow residential above that? I guess I'm just, I'm failing to see.
I think he is allowing residential above it. It's just not residential on the ground floor with the live-work unit, right?
No, the live-work unit is the ground, would be on the ground floor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can still live above your business.
Yeah, I'm saying like additional, you know, having additional apartments, for example, above a live-work unit.
There is a little bit of difference between a live-work unit and a home occupation. But essentially, they are primarily residential in neighbor, in nature. And so, again, we're getting back to that. If you have a home oc on the bottom floor and you're not allowed to employ anybody outside of the family except for one person, we're never going to reach our job goals because you have home occupations with residential above it. Consequently, if you have four residences, if you have four live-work units on the bottom floor, you're never going to have more than four jobs created beyond people who already live there. And to buy a residence in the residential zone and employ the exact same number of people and be in a residential zone property, not a commercial property.
Sure, but it, so do, are we, let me ask you this. Are, are live-work units allowed in our, you know, downtown Davidson?
They are. As a matter of fact, that, the two units that were constructed on Third Street, right behind the city's parking lot?
Yes.
And the shampoo store, those are both constructed as live-work units. So they're residences with front space available for professional offices or massage rooms or chiropractor's office, whatever that.
Are they, are those, are they being used for that?
Um, they are currently being, I, I believe they are currently being occupied for Airbnbs, but I don't quote me on that. But part of the issue that came up when that project came through, because we did talk about that when we started this process, and that is, as the city planner, I cannot regulate if they sell that house to somebody who doesn't want to run a business out of their house. So it was built to be a live-work unit, but I can't force them to work out of their house. So it's problematic, even now, let alone expanding it into a mixed-use zone.
If it's, but if it's a commercial, if it's zone commercial, can't you actually regulate that?
The C one district specifically allows you to do live-work units and a lot.
But as a commercial use, not as a residential use.
But the, the ground floor commercial is only required on Gorig and Davidson.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. Can you have a, can you have a live-work unit on Gorig or Davidson?
Uh, no, not on the ground floor, upstairs you can.
Even though, okay. All right. So if I, if I was a developer coming in, I would argue that, because I would say that, I would say, no, you have listed that as a permitted commercial use. And it is not a residential use, it's a permitted commercial use.
So, so use number ten in the C one zone is dwelling units provided residential uses are located above a C one commercial use. An adequate off-street parking is allowed. So it specifically says a dwelling, which basically is a residence with kitchen, with cooking facilities. So it has to be upstairs. And then the exception is twenty-one, which is home occupation, and then twenty-four, which is live-work units. And I don't think the code especially lays that out, but yeah. I think that's part of the problem I have with applying it in the C one zone. And this would prevent that problem from migrating into our C two zone.
Okay, so just, the reason I'm, I'm pushing this one is because I have a real, I have a real like special place in my heart for shophouses, which are, you know, live-work units, super popular and all over Vietnam and Hong Kong and, you know, Southeast Asia generally. And they are like some of the most vibrant places you can imagine. I think that's like, like a very, like, it's just excellent, it's great in every way. And, you know, that, that architecture, it just works. And frequently, there will be, you know, a business and also in the back of that is where, you know, they just close up the front at night and then it's home, right? And there are also apartments above that. And I think that is, like, I want that, I think we should allow that. I don't think we should allow us, an Airbnb disguised as a live-work unit. I don't, you know, I don't want that. I think that's, you know, a pretty blatant slap in the face for what we're intending.
Well, but the Airbnb theoretically does meet the live-work unit. Also, the other one I forgot to point out, and that was on the second page, use number fifty-two is resident, it does allow residential uses on the bottom floor of any building in the C one zone as long as it doesn't front on Davidson or Gorig. And in that case, they front on Third Street. So they could have just built residential units under fifty-two, but they were constructed specifically to allow for live-work options. And that's our existing code. And you're getting at the exact loophole which kind of led us to this conversation because that loophole in the C one zone has crept its way into the C two zone. And it's not a problem on the second, third, and fourth floor, it's just a problem on the first floor.
I don't want to, I don't want them to build our residential developments with small commercial spaces that'll never get filled. That doesn't help anybody. I'm in favor for larger commercial on the bottom. I like your ratios of the ninety, or the eighty-five percent. I have no doubt that the live-work units that you're thinking of are nice. I think for our commercial zones, the job creation should be a concern. And smaller commercial, uh, business, businesses don't provide as much jobs as larger commercial.
I think, I'd have to disagree with that, because I think they, you know, if we're talking about, you know, density of jobs, which I think is honestly probably the only, maybe not the only, but the most important measure of that, then I think they're probably, you know, square foot for square foot, they probably create more jobs than a larger commercial use. Okay, so our definition of a live-work unit is a structure or a portion of a structure that combines a commercial or manufacturing activity that is allowed in the zone with a residential living space for the owner of the commercial or manufacturing business or the owner's employee and that person's household. Where the resident owner or employee of the business is responsible for the commercial or manufacturing activity performed and where the commercial or manufacturing activity conducted takes place, subject to a valid business license associated with the premises. So that tells me there's gotta be a business there for it to be a live-work unit. And if there's a business there, it's commercial use, and I'm fine with there being residential above it.
So those units were constructed in a way that allows for a business to occupy the front area so that, so that customers don't have to enter into the residential area to get to the business.
And, but is there a valid business license associated with the premises?
Yes. So if they're operating a business, they would have to have a business license.
Is there right now a business license associated with the premises?
Right now, I don't believe there is.
So that's not a live-work unit then, according to our definition?
It's not a live-work unit now. So it would be under fifty-two, not, um, twenty-four, so, yeah. So it can become a twenty-four, but it currently is operating as a fifty-two.
So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, essentially to me, we're, we're dealing with very- you know, essentially to me, uh, we're, we're dealing with very different things. A live work unit is not the Airbnb that you're talking about. It's, it's not. That, that is something else entirely. That is a residential use in a commercial zone, which we permitted, but under a separate thing. It's, you're right, it's, you know, yeah, it's 52, it's not 24. To me, the way I'm reading our definition is that, you know, if, if something is permitted as a commercial use, it's a live work unit. If there is no business in there, someone's just living there, it is no longer, that is non-performing. It's not allowed.
Yep.
So to me, we've got a commercial use of the ground floor and we're letting somebody, you know, also live in that space. This is not a situation where there's a living space that may or may not have a business in it. And I, like, I just, I want to encourage that use. And I think, so I, you know, I am, I am hesitant to put additional restrictions on it that don't exist for other commercial uses. In this case, not allowing additional residential apartment. Is that, you follow where I'm going with this?
Yes. And I would argue that what you're talking about is we need to fix the C1 zone, which, which is a valid point, but isn't, isn't necessarily what I started out to accomplish here. It may be something that you want to add, and at the end of this, that may be part of your recommendation.
Okay.
And, and that would be for the city council to consider. I was not here at the time that they amended the C1 zoning district to allow for residential in the downtown zone. Would you see the logic in it?
I like you Travis, so I'd like to think that you would have done that a little better, had you been around. I think that, yeah, the way that went down is not ideal as far as I'm concerned. Then again, I'm not supposed to criticize past actions of this body, so I won't. Stop right there. Um, okay, so I guess, all right. I had one more, one more clarification, then I'll let this one go. So are we, our live work units, they're currently permitted in C2? Because it's not.
They are currently permitted in the C2 zone.
Okay.
And this would correct that. They would not be allowed in a C2 district, well, I shouldn't say that. They would not be allowed on the ground floor. But if you had a commercial with residential above, people could run businesses upstairs, but not downstairs in the commercial space.
Okay. All right, that's, I'm not going to die on that hill. I do, the other one I was looking at though was, um, 38, public and quasi-public buildings such as post office, libraries, and government offices. That seems, I don't know, that seems fine. I don't, again, I'm not sure where the conflict is there.
C2 number 30?
Uh, sorry, the C1 38.
Uh, yes, that is a good point. I think I only excluded those because I have taken out police and fire stations, public parks and rec facilities, public transportation terminals in the C2s. So I'm just thinking I was being consistent.
Yeah, so I, you know, police and, hey, police, police stations, police stations seems all right, fire stations, I guess, uh, seems all right too. I mean, we're just like, I'm sure it would be annoying to have a, you know, fire engine leave in the middle of the night under your house, but like, we have a, we also have a railroad track runs through town that is, you know, people get used to it. And it's, that just doesn't happen very often. And, I don't know. Probably, you know, unlikely to really be an issue within the foreseeable future, but I, I don't see any reason to exclude that. Either those, the, the police or fire stations or the quasi-public and public building. Anybody want to arm wrestle me for that one?
I don't want to live above a fire station or a police station. But, you know, I have the choi, I have the choice of deciding not to, right? I have the choice of deciding not to, but police or fire buildings are usually, there'll be lots of talking about that if that comes about, okay? So there'll probably be new legislation or more ordinances passed whenever that type of stuff comes around. I don't think that's frequent enough to worry about.
Okay. What about library though?
Library, I don't care. Library sounds fine. I agree with you on that.
What about post office?
Post office also sounds.
What about C Hall?
City Hall also sounds okay.
All right.
So maybe 38 should stay.
I got one.
Okay.
I convinced Brian. Donna, what do you think?
Oh, I disagree with all. I don't want to live above, um, I don't want to live above, um, any of them.
So Travis, quasi-public, quasi-public buildings also includes morgues. They'd be really quiet.
Ooh.
There you go.
I just, yeah, I would, I, no.
So for clarification, we are not asking you to move your house above a library or a fire station.
The only one that I would live above would probably be a library. That would, that, that is it.
Okay.
Which I frequent quite a bit, the library, but.
Again, we're not asking you to live above any of these cities. All right.
But doesn't mean somebody else wouldn't want to though. Somebody else might enjoy it.
So, and, you know, some, in some cases, like the very, I guess that is maybe less enjoyable can be a benefit because that means it is going to be more affordable. And, um, that's not such a bad thing, um, as far as I'm concerned.
So have we beat up, you know, allowed uses? Do you guys want to talk about any other ones? Before we move on to the rest of it?
We're happy to move on.
So what I took from that conversation is for the C1 uses, put back in the 38, the post office, libraries, and take out the recycling, the recycling center.
Yes. I think that's what we agreed on. I know, I know Tel had strong feelings about the live work units.
Yeah, about, about 24.
But I also heard that you didn't want to die on that hill, so I was, didn't know if you gave up.
I should have left that out, yeah. I, you know, if I could convince you to, to.
It's good that you aren't convincing. I want more commercial as opposed to less.
But this is commercial, this is commercial is what I'm saying. It is. Live work. Look at the, look at the definition. It requires a valid business license associated with.
You can live above it.
I understand, but why, okay, so, there's a, all right. I'm going to have to convince you another time, yeah. All right. Raising my blood pressure, Brian.
Sorry, man.
Okay, no, that's all. Let's, uh, you're right, we should move on.
Hey, I, uh, I'm okay with your ratios, your eighty-five percent, right, the ten and the five. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
And I do like the fact that you threw a caveat in there and in extreme circumstances, we'll look at it with a conditional use. Especially if it's a small footprint, that ten percent, five percent becomes really, really small, so it's unusable, so I like that. So on D, right, the mixed use developments must be able to demonstrate a reasonable consistency with the comprehensive plan. I, the wording in there is reasonable consistency, that's kind of tough. But, I mean, you're the one that's going to be reviewing it, so it's on you. But, um, whenever an applicant determines what's feasible or what's reasonable, it's usually what's different than what you think is feasible or reasonable. I'm just, I don't know how you would make that easier for you to control, but that's just, just an observation.
I mean, I think that, that wording there to me is a signal to the hearings examiner. You know, should it go to the hearing, should some, any of this, you know, the, uh, land in front of the hearings examiner for any reason. I think D kind of says, that signals to them that, yeah, we're, we're still trying to meet our commercial goals.
Are we going to meet our commercial goals? I mean, that, a lot of that depends on what the allowed use is going to go in there, right? I mean, so some, some allowed uses aren't going to meet your commercial goals and some are. Some are going to exceed, you're just hoping for like an average over those zones, right?
Yes.
It just makes it, seems like D is kind of a, right, yeah, reasonable narrative kind of thing, right?
I mean, that's going to be true of any commercial use, with or without residential above it.
I just know it in my real life, every time there's a word like feasible or reasonable, it just.
Real life.
No, it seems like the only way anybody's, the only way that I know I'm being fair with those things is both sides equal, right? There's really no win when that, when it says reasonable or, or feasible. But again, um, if you think that you're going to be able to make, um, strong decisions, survive appeal, no.
So I did throw the caveat in there later on in the sentence where it says, including that it can further the goals and policies for commercial development in the community. Because theoretically, you're going to have a, the same developer build a one-story commercial building, and it would theoretically be consistent with our, our commercial zone. So the fact that it's eighty-five percent full of commercial, you can make the argument that you're still eighty-five percent consistent, whereas if you're proposing ten percent commercial, now all of a sudden, it's going to be harder for you to make the argument. And the reason, and I, I believe there's a reasonable consistency, um, body of law. And if I make a decision to deny or approve a permit and it gets appealed to the hearings examiner, that the hearings examiner would take a look at this and interpret. Is my interpretation reasonable under the existing case law to determine whether or not the city's commercial goals are being furthered?
Okay. Yeah, tell me that point, dude, that's actually good. So on E, the, I liked the, the criteria in there. Demonstrates there's a multimodal connection, right? So you don't have these isolated islands. How, is this another case of the hearings examiner determines how far they have to build a sidewalk? Would you say, hey, you've got to build it all the way to Walmart? I mean.
Potentially, or they may just have to fill in the gaps, the hockey player's smile, where you have to add, you know, eighty feet of sidewalk here and then, you know, a block down, you add another two hundred feet. And now you've met the minimal criteria of you can walk from this residential development to the Walmart on sidewalks, and so the kids who are going for a candy bar can get there safely. Yeah. And which is, leads into F, and that is, yeah, you're building frontage and sidewalks, but the sidewalks drop into a wetland. That's not consistent with the multimodal idea that kids, kids can walk around residential neighborhoods, but they can't walk around commercial districts.
Okay.
And frankly, this came out of the concern about the Belmont RV, where you're having people all times of night and day walking around the commercial district, and all the businesses have gone home and been closed up shop. So you're going to have all kinds of knuckleheads down there painting and breaking windows and doing drugs and drinking and causing, you know, knuckleheaded stuff to occur while nobody's on site to operate the business.
Okay. What else?
That's all I got on this one.
Sean.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where'd you twenty percent numbers for parking?
Just, just experience.
Okay. Are they satisfied?
I'm sure.
All right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the, you've got a couple of changes we've talked about, and those are basically just in a list. For permitted uses. Okay. All right, good. I agree with you both. Anybody want to make a motion for me?
I move that we adopt the recommendations prepared by staff for the, uh, housing in the commercial zone, except with the modifications that we, uh, we, that we allow the quasi-public buildings, public, quasi-public buildings, and that we, uh, remove recycling collection point.
All right, motions been made and seconded. Um, any more discussion? All right, Janice, would you take a roll call before?
Yes. Um, before I do that, I have the motion stated as Brian Matson moved it forward, ordinance one five zero five as revised, and we'll pick up your revisions, to the city council with the recommendation that it be approved. Sean Agathon, seconded. Any corrections to that motion?
Perfect.
Excellent. Sean Agathon. Your vote?
Oh, I said, uh, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Brian Matson?
Yes.
And Tel Jensen?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Next up, oh wait, I am going to close up the hearing for this item. All right, next, uh, let's see, what time we at? Eight o'clock. Anybody need a break? Push ahead. Okay, let's, uh, take a five-minute break. Come back at twelve minutes after eight o'clock.
Are we, are we?
No.
Where's your crowd? Where's your crowd?
Yeah, I don't know.
I know you.
You're here. Change your mind.
You do all the time, man.
The red light or gray today, I seem to have received it.
So just a reminder, the video is recording, so.
How was your trip, Travis?
Thank you.
Good?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Was it fun?
Yeah.
Nice, a warm over there?
So free? No, freezing.
Where'd you go?
Chicago.
Outside of Chicago.
Did you have family there?
No, well, my son is there playing hockey.
You're a hockey fan?
Sixteen with a high of nineteen.
Oh, my.
Oh, really?
And then my brother was almost professional in hockey.
Oh, we're going to have to talk.
We are going to have to talk. It was sister play, not me.
Yes, as there's like no.
Huge hockey in my family. At least they'll have everything in my shop.
Yeah, my son is playing numerous games, diarrhea, yeah.
Wow.
So yeah, so he was, he was pronounced the best player of the league.
I, I read that tweet on Facebook, and she, I saw that. I'm like, oh, look at that. So you got a little playtime, look what happened.
So yeah, so he got, he can get about twenty-five minutes of games and have four points.
Nice. And she worked proud at all. You were screaming at him.
That's great.
Were you telling everyone, oh, oh, oh?
You want to get.
Tongue thoroughly embarrassing them.
We want to get back and watch the meal, because we were sitting like right under the cameras for.
I'm going to tell you what, take this, it's better.
It's so funny, because I would skate so.
Well, my teacher's not up, that's not good.
It's just so cute, because he goes.
Thank you, Tel.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
I can speak better now.
Lower sixteen, one high of nineteen.
Always cold there.
The high of nineteen, Boeing.
My parents' neighbor is from there, and he, he was a judge.
I said eight twelve.
I'd like to point on the drop desk.
Which one?
Wouldn't you hire one of them? Cause like, if you ask, I mean, that's wild, right?
Yeah.
They may be waiting for the climate.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously.
Yeah, maybe you think there's some.
Well, and I didn't make the recommendation, because this is a policy.
Yeah, a lot of desperation. This, uh, these ordinances, well. These ordinances will probably.
Just the recommendation. So I checked it out, I didn't. I figured, I figured that first one would take about an hour, so it wasn't part of.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm. I do. Yeah. It's not, doesn't really seem to be that bad. All right, um, we're back. Next up is public hearing for marijuana retail sales code amendment request. This is a request to amend woodland, the woodland municipal code to allow for the retail sale of marijuana within the city of woodland, ZTA dash two-two dash zero-zero-one, as previously ordinance one-four-six-four. Um, we've got a packet in here and a staff presentation, I believe.
Thank you.
We're gonna have staff presentation first, no? No, didn't hurt anything, you're fine.
Uh, I.
Oh, yes, yeah, sir. Good point. Um, can, I need to ask if any member of the commission has an ex parte communication or conflicts of interest that we need to declare?
No.
No, sir.
I also do not. Thank you, Jen. Moving on.
Thank you. So, um, just as a history, the woodland municipal code, section seventeen point five zero is our recreational marijuana code. It was adopted in twenty fourteen under ordinance fourteen forty, and in that code, what it said is retail sales are prohibited, but production and processing is a permitted use in the industrial zones west of the train tracks, provided that you can meet the rest of this code. So that's, uh, what the code currently says. The city last considered retail sales in twenty nineteen, and ordinance fourteen sixty-four, which is in your packet, was rejected in October of twenty nineteen. The count, the council actually added retail sales to prohibitive list because they were using a recurring retail moratorium or prohibition to prevent retail sales. So they hadn't made a decision since twenty fourteen, and so we kind of put an end to that recurring moratorium and changed the code itself at that time. Uh, what you have for you tonight is a request by Paradigm LLC, which applied for zoning text amendment, and a zoning text amendment of two thousand and twenty-two, number one. And they are asking the city or through the city to reconsider its prohibition, and they would like the city to add retail marijuana sales to the list of permitted uses in the highway commercial zone. And, um, the twenty nineteen draft ordinance that is before you, it is essentially the, uh, ordinance sixteen, uh, fourteen sixty-four, which was rejected in twenty nineteen. So, um, in the packet, you'll also find that there's a CEPA checklist that was completed in twenty nineteen. It was a non-project checklist for this exact same proposal. So we're adopting that by reference because the environmental process was completed, and the Department of Commerce had reviewed the comprehend, or the code change for consistency with Road Management Act. So those are being adopted. If you're wondering why they're in the packet, a citizen had pointed out that some of that stuff is documented dated twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, but the ordinance before you is dated twenty twenty-two. That's because if you make a recommendation and the city council adopts it, it'll already be updated for, um, twenty twenty-two adoption. So I don't actually make a recommendation, but the applicant is here to, uh, make their presentation on, on their behalf.
Okay. Great, thanks Travis. Uh-huh. All right. You're up. So applicant presentation to the commission.
Well, my name is Joy, and I am here in behalf of twenty after four. And in the previous council meetings, one of the major sticking points was allowed the zoning. Retail operation was unknown about how the business would bring in crime or not be positive to the community. Since we have opened, we have in fact proven this is wrong. Our neighboring businesses are very happy with us. The police active videos went down. We're doing every donation that we can. We did Thanksgiving, we did Christmas, and now we're doing the back-to-school backpacks for the woodland community. We were also able to bring in four employee, or nine employees, including myself. As we said, we, um, we have applied for the rezoning once already and were denied due to being the marijuana retail store. Since being open, we have not had not one issue with crime, bordering, or negative impact on the economy. People who travel here from Kalamah and other cities near also shop in a lot of the other businesses that are downtown. We've had, oh, like around two thousand signatures signed for people that would love to see us be able to stay here in woodland without breaking any rules. We've cleaned up the parking lot, we, there was a lot of lording going on before we came in. We've increased our security, there's, we have round-the-clock employees. The neighboring business have sent in some letters. I don't know if you guys got to get those from like the Rooster Brew and Bigfoot Rock and Slate Co., some other neighbors. We have a couple disable, disabled neighbors that are happy that they can call on us if they need to. In twenty twenty, there was fifteen million dollars given out to county, cities, and towns where licensed marijuana retailers are physically located. Funds may only be distributed to jurisdictions that do not prohibit the setting of any state-licensed marijuana retail. In saying that, we just want a fair and equal treatment of any twenty-one and over establishment house. Is there any questions?
I don't have any.
I don't have any questions?
We did, we did get that, uh, the, the letters from businesses and saw the petitions as well. Thank you for this. Okay, we might, we might have questions for you later. Thank you so much. All right, um, I'm gonna open public testimony at this time. Um, does anyone like to speak in support of the, uh, code amendment request? No. All right, anybody online? I don't see anyone. All right, anyone neutral? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? No one at all, this is surprising. Okay. I thought for sure we'd get some interest finally, but no. All right, um, moving right along then. Uh, do we have a, do you have a staff response at all? Didn't figure. Okay. Don't need to have a final rebuttal. Check one more timeline here. Doesn't look like anybody's, anybody else is even on the meeting.
Sorry, I'm trying to get that back up, so.
Yeah, I don't see anybody. Okay, so, let's see. Maybe I'll, um, go a little out of order and not close the public testimony just in case somebody shows up online. And we can move along to deliberation.
So yeah, so there is nobody joined online, it's just your computer and my computer.
Okay. All right, um, yeah, I'm gonna wait to, to close the testimony, just in case, um, somebody wants to show up online. But let's move on to deliberation.
I, uh.
Thoughts?
I certainly appreciate the additional nine employees that they have. That's good for the community. I also agree with Joy's presentation in that, uh, transportation, transportation impact fees, right? You have these pass-by businesses where, you know, you know, you're driving by, you might swing in there cause you need gas or whatnot. These are the trips that, you know, that, that benefit from an additional business being here that wouldn't be here otherwise. Uh, also the, the fact that there's fifteen million dollars that's split among jurisdictions that allow it, that we're walking away from. I think those are all strong, compelling reasons to be in favor of them. But again, I understand it's a sensitive subject to many people, so I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Certainly, there are other reasons that they, that people have for maybe not supporting it, but.
True.
Those are just off the top of my head or something.
All right, um, Shaun, thank you.
I appreciate, um, I myself am, don't agree. I'm gonna be perfectly honest. Um, I have my personal reasons, my feelings. Um, I do appreciate the more business that it's bringing and the less crime rate, and more business for the folks around you. Um, I just, I, I just, I don't agree.
All right, I, does anybody know how big that parcel is?
I'm sorry?
I'm thinking about, like, you know, we talk a lot about, we have been talking a lot about job density, and, um, what are our targets per acre? What's that?
Parking lots are big.
Yeah.
I mean, there's three businesses down there, four actually.
But the, do you know how big the actual parcel you're on is? It's what, can't be more than quarter acre.
Yeah, about that.
And then what are our job targets for commercials?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty per acre?
Twenty jobs per acre.
So we're there.
So between Bigfoot Bark, Rooster Coffee, and twenty after four, they're probably exceeding twenty.
Cause the Rooster Brew has like twenty-six, I have nine in with me, and then the Slate Co. has probably six, seven, eight, and then you got the Rooster Brew, so there's over twenty between the four businesses that are there.
So we're, yeah, okay, thank you. I think, what I'm getting at is that, um, you know, I think we are, this is a business that is.
And they don't just bring business to the ones around us, they stop at like Burger Hill or A and P and get gas, they go to Walmart and go grocery shopping because they're here and don't wanna go all the way back to another city and then all the way home.
Sure.
So it does bring business.
It does, I agree, it does.
Lots of other businesses, not just the three around me.
And if we can get them zoned, we can hire more employees. At this point, we work too many hours because we pay this big five hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we would hope to have more employees eventually.
Okay. Um. All right, what is the, Travis, what is the city, the current, I guess. Do you know what the fiscal impact of this, I know, you know, it wasn't a ballot initiative, so you don't have to go through all those like we do, you know, you look for the state of Washington and stuff like that. Do you have, does the city have an idea of what kinda, you know, if this is a, became a permitted use, and we already have, you know, one business that would, I assume, continue operating as that permitted use?
The way it works in Texas, I know, is every license is done taking up.
Joy, can you come to the microphone so you can get on the record?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Thanks.
Every license is taken up. So let's say a license in Longview. If someone is to buy that license, they cannot move out of the city limit of Longview. If they buy a store anywhere, those cannot move. The only things they can move are grows and processors. So there is no free moving store for the state of Washington right now. So even if you lift the ban, there's not another store that can move to woodland right now because there's no stores that are able to move. The only reason we were able to move is because the state, city, and county took those, took the building we were in, and we didn't own the building, we rented the building. That's why they paid us to move, and we got early eligible pay is because they wanted us out of there before the project started.
Okay, can I ask you what the, um, and I should've looked this up myself before the meeting, but I failed to. What the taxes you pay, what have to charge?
Right now, the city with their fines is gonna get a little over two hundred thousand dollars, which only the city council controls, not the rest of that fifteen million dollars, which when the road department asks for money, it goes directly to the road department, not city council. When the police department asks for extra money, it goes directly to the police department.
Sure, okay.
So.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there, though. How much, what is the?
Right now, with what I'm estimated to make right now, the city's gonna make probably around forty thousand plus in, in their one point eight-five percent that will go to the general fund, not counting the rest of that money for having a marijuana store in your city.
What's the time span for that?
One year.
One year?
Okay, so what is that, like, on a, on a sale, what's the percentage of sale that is?
You guys get one point eight-five percent to the city fund.
One point, right. What, just out of curiosity, what is your total, the total tax?
This year, I'm gonna be selling about four million dollars.
I want percentage, though.
What do you mean?
On a sale, what's the percentage of sales tax? You have to, or just, or tax.
It's forty-three percent sales tax.
Thank, um, okay. All right. Well, do you know, what are the, uh, what are the, what's the other closest other retail outlets?
You got Battleground, which is a forty-minute one-way, and then a forty-minute back. You've got Vancouver, which is, uh, close to twenty-five to thirty minutes depending on traffic, or you go up into Longview Kelsa, which is another twenty-five, thirty minutes to get into the closest one in the town. We have become the third retailer in the county. That's city's and county's store.
Okay.
So I think I know the answer to this, John, but I just want, I want, I'd like you to explain to me, so obviously you're more educated on this than I am. So you had mentioned earlier that you're able to move jurisdictions because your property was.
Eminent domain, the way the eminent domain in the state of Washington works at this, because it's a state-run store. If the state were to close this down due to profiting for themselves because Kelsa's already approved those houses to be built on the golf course, plus all the rest of the upgrades they're doing to the other side over there by the golf course. The taxes they're making on it are way more than the property they took.
So my, what my question was gonna be, if, if this does pass, would you still be the only?
As of right now, yes, because there's.
Available license.
There's no other available license to move. They're, they're all taken up. Like I say, if someone buys a store in another county or city, they can't move from that county or city to another city. It's not like the grows, where if someone buys a grow, they can move. It's not like the grows, where if someone buys a grow, they can move to any city or county they want.
Thank you.
Is there any... Does the state have any rules about, I guess, like proximity to another marijuana retailer?
350 feet.
So they have to be at least 350 feet apart? Okay. Okay. Do we have any other...
I, I don't have anything else. I think you might struggle to get too much deliberation about it. I think this is one of those issues that people kind of have an idea about, right?
Yeah. We have 220 to 270 people a day come through the store, 55% or more from Woodland.
Yeah, I think your, you know, the list of names you have on here is...
Yeah, lots.
That's significant, yeah.
When I did turn it in to the city council, I was told that they thought they were all fake signatures and all my customers are lying, that they don't shop at other stores and they don't do other stuff when they come to town. Why would someone from the East Coast? Because they're in Richfield, I was the closest store to them, so they come here and then do their shopping elsewhere. People going out to the H caves, out, out to rivers, going skiing, water jet skiing and everything, you know? I mean, that's all year-round business.
All right. Thanks, Shauna. Appreciate it.
Has anybody jumped online?
I haven't seen anybody yet, no. I got a couple of questions for you, Travis. Do you... Do you know what the... I don't know, I don't know if it's even fair for me to ask you this. Like, what, what is the primary objection?
For, from who?
From the city council, I guess.
So, at the time, the council rejected it because they felt that it was inconsistent with the will of the community.
Okay. And that was, was that based on...
It was based on due to marijuana store background.
I appreciate it, John. I'm gonna, don't worry about it. Obviously, you care a lot about this issue, but I'm gonna ask you to... Travis, answer some questions for me.
It was strictly a policy decision. I, to be honest, I don't remember exactly what their exact reasons were, but the council, if I remember correctly, it was five to two?
Three to four.
Three to four.
That's close, okay. Do you, was there a lot of public testimony then?
I don't remember for sure.
Okay.
My lady that owned the trucking business talked about her truck drivers being able to buy marijuana too easily. They're grown, grown people.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, do you know if... I don't know, it's, it's hard for me to, so I'm, I'm a little bit conflicted about this, you know, because it's... Quite honestly, it's hard for me to say we should just like walk away from substantial, you know, tax revenue from this. And clearly, there's demand for it in our community and it has been made legal in the state of Washington. And it's something that people want and they are probably gonna find it one way or another, right? I think, you know, previously, if people wanted it, they had to break the law. That's not the case any longer. You know, people have different, people have disagreements about that, but... I guess my feeling is, keeping retail out of Woodland is not gonna keep marijuana out of Woodland. All it's gonna do is keep the tax revenue out of Woodland. So, and probably a handful of jobs as well. On the other hand, I've seen, you know, I've seen parts of towns where it seems like, you know, on every block there's a marijuana retailer. I, I probably don't, you know, I don't think that's really a risk here, but like, it just sort of, I don't know, maybe just aesthetically, it doesn't suit me. Can we... Can we add a condition about... I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking about like how, with the storage units where we said we tied it to like the population in town and the square footage. Is there any way for us to say, basically, you know, prevent there being eight marijuana retailers in town?
My, my, my basic understanding, one second, is that it's already tied to population, that they only issued a certain number of licenses for certain populations. It's like built into the state licenses, is my understanding.
Okay.
But to answer your specific question, you can recommend whatever you like.
Okay. Well, if it's already, I mean, if somebody's already done it for us, then... All right.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, I mean... I just think about the kids in Woodland. I mean, they're gonna get it even if you're not here, but if you're here, they're gonna be able to get it a lot easier. And that's, that's how I look at it. And the kids in the community and... That's just how I...
So are you, are you thinking of, you know, like, you're in junior high and you might have tried to pay somebody in the parking lot to go and buy a beer?
Correct. I mean, I, we all did when we were in high school, didn't we? And it's here.
Never did I ever, but I knew people.
Well, most, most of, I mean, I was a teenager once. I mean, it's here.
It's already here before us.
In, in that, in that situation, you know, just like to, I don't know, draw that out...
I feel strongly about it, I'll just put it that way. I'm not gonna change my mind.
Okay, but just, just to draw that out a little bit, like, in, in that instance, you know, I think we can probably all agree that diverting alcohol to minors, you know, is not a good thing, right?
That too.
So, you know, to prevent that, would you be in favor of, you know, not allowing alcohol sales? And I'm not trying to trap you, this is a little bit of a rhetorical question, but I guess I'm, I'm trying to get at like, is the...
Tiny bit of a trap.
Well...
Tiny bit.
Yeah.
I want to respect fellow planning person for, for their own ideas and things. And there's nothing wrong with voting the same as everybody else. That's why we have three different people, right? That's why we vote. So you don't feel bad about feeling like you're at the center, right? Or that you're in opposition because it's entirely your right. So...
Well, as a coach and a parent, I just, that's how I feel.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. And I'm, I'm actually fairly sympathetic to your point of view. I just wonder if... You know, if, if this is the, you know, I get, if, if maintaining a prohibition is like the most effective way to achieve what it sounds like your goal is, which is a goal that I share. I guess that's, that's where I'm going. And I don't know, maybe it's, I personally think it probably isn't, but I could easily vote, so.
Can I take one thing? I agree with you as parents. I'm a parent. My son, 22, he'll be a doctor by the 25, he goes to do DUB. If you're a parent and parents are kids, they're not gonna want anything to do with it. That's my point. My middle daughter, she's done graduate high school and she's gonna call her. My next daughter did straight As and Bs. If, if, if you parents are kids, you don't have to worry about that. So...
All right.
So, I think this is, and I don't want to rush this. I think this is one of those issues that not a lot of, not a lot of additional facts gonna be found or uncovered. And so, in, in light of that, I'd just like to move that we, we take it to a vote.
Okay.
Before we do that, are we gonna close test, close public testimony?
Yeah, thank you, Jen. Still don't see anybody on here, so yes, I'm gonna close public testimony and the question has been called. No, that's not right. I'm screwing up my Robert's Rules. Yeah, I, I, I think you're right, Brian. I am a little bit, you know, wary of being hasty, but yeah, I think it's probably time, so.
I probably should clean up what I, my request. I move that, I move that we approve staff's recommendation to allow retail marijuana sales in the C2 zone.
Okay. So, Shauna, you can second this, just to bring it to a vote. Seconding it doesn't mean...
That I'm agreeing with it. Okay, so I second to bring it to a vote.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
So, motion has been made and seconded to approve what was previously ordinance 1464. I don't think we've got any more discussion, but we have room for it. Okay. Let's take the vote then, Jen, please.
Okay, before we vote, I'm going to state the motion. Bryan Matson moved to recommend that the city council approve the zoning change to allow marijuana sales in the C2 zone. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I will now take the roll call vote. Shauna Gofform?
I do, I disagree.
So, no?
No, thank you.
Bryan Matson?
Yes.
Thank you. Del Jensen?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
Motion passes. I'm gonna close public hearing for this item now. Thanks, everybody, for participating in that in a civil manner, I suppose. Next up, we have another public hearing on agriculture zoning district adoption. There's a hearing to consider amending the Washington, the Woodland Municipal Code to add an agricultural zoning district to the city code. It's ZTA-22-002. Thanks for coming out. And have we got any ex parte communication or conflicts with key declare?
No.
No.
No here as well. So, Travis, have you got a staff's presentation for you?
Yes, so I actually... So, this is the public hearing for zoning text amendment 2022, number two, and it's these agricultural zoning districts. So we had had a workshop on this, but we never got a chance to get into significant detail. So, we had gone through a 2018 urban growth boundary expansion discussion and we had talked about expanding our urban growth boundary into the Woodland bottoms. And one of the major concerns raised during that time was that there would be unnecessary or premature pressure on agricultural land to be developed. And so there were significant property owners, especially agricultural property owners, who were concerned that the city didn't have any kind of influence to be able to prevent that. And so what we are talking about today is the public hearing to take a look at the three county zoning districts. The county has agriculture, industrial, agriculture, and the Agriculture 38 zoning district. And at the workshop that we had in December, we discussed the idea that we wanted industrial or ag industrial, if it's industrial development, that it should occur in the urban growth boundary as annexed industrial development as opposed to county ag industrial. And so what you had asked me to do at that time, and that is combine what you felt was more applicable for the ag and the ag 38 zone. And what you have before you is the result of that, and that is a draft ordinance that incorporates different parts of that. So, since we haven't had a chance to review this ordinance itself, we can either go through it section by section, or if it's the time of night where you want to continue this to the next hearing, so you have a little more chance to think about it. And that might be up to you. And given that the court has submitted some additional comments and raised some concerns, that it might be an opportunity for us to make a couple of decisions here, whether or not you want to try and tackle this fully tonight by going through the code section, because this is essentially brand new code that you haven't had a chance to look at before. So it might be a little premature for you to, for me to expect you to do a full recommendation and take it to the city.
Are you leading the witness, Travis?
Sorry? I am not, but I can hope you get my...
Yeah.
I, I am curious, I went through the letter from the Port of Woodland, Travis. What, maybe if we, if we do decide to do a continuous, which I would lead toward, why, why are well deceptives so concerned with the railroad spur that they want to do? I guess I don't know enough about their plans to, to know how this would affect it. You know what I mean? Some of these points in here I haven't thought of. Maybe I, I don't know if I, it would benefit me to have you look into it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, in that, in that case, the "we" might be, she might be including more than just the port. The "we" that has issues with the well deceptives. I think she's, I think she's just talking about well deceptives.
There's also hunting confliction in there and stuff. And then the additional farm worker housing also. There's, there's some stuff in there on RAVL, right?
Yeah, it's interesting, because it seems like, you know, really only the first issue she mentioned is the railroad spur and...
Yeah, the other one, I don't know how that affects it.
Yeah, I mean, they're interesting points, they just don't...
I assume it's from the Port of Woodland, it's stuff that they have concerns with, right? Not just for the benefit of mankind. Not that they're not concerned with that.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that this is very helpful with is it gives you a lens to take a look at the code language, to figure out whether you could find those answers yourself. Because...
So let's dig in. I'm kidding.
Because the ag worker housing is a great example. I believe that to be covered under the ag and the ag accessory language that is in here. But, just because I read it that way doesn't mean that that's actually what it says, right? And then, you know, there's this bigger philosophical question, and that is, if we're talking about ag zoning in the city, this would only be applicable if they annexed to the city. And it's to help the people who might be in our urban growth boundary be comfortable understanding what the ag rules would be if they annexed. So for example, the Thony Farm is currently in the city. They might want this zoning, because they're currently zoning industrial. But that's a whole comprehensive plan discussion, because they're currently comp plan industrial. So, we will have much deeper philosophical conversations about the industrial, commercial, and agricultural land supply in our growth boundary when we update our comp plan.
Yeah, that's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah. Six to 12 months ago, depending on COVID being resolved, right?
Well, I think the state legislature is looking at some...
Yes.
Big code, big amendments there too. I don't know how much they'll affect us, it seemed like it was mostly bigger jurisdictions here. Okay. Well, you, you guys just wanna continue this or you wanna talk?
I move that we continue the, we continue this issue to the next, next year, or next, sorry, next year.
You gotta give us the date.
So the date for time, so the date would be third Thursday.
Third Thursday is March.
Should be in there.
So I'm gonna say three seventeen, that might be three seventeen.
It'll be St. Patty's Day.
Is it?
Yes.
Is that a national holiday?
So three seventeen at seven o'clock here in this room and on GoToMe.
St. Patrick's Day, you know, ancestry.com said I was one percent Irish.
How does that math work out even? How do you get to one percent?
I've never done it, my daughter is Irish.
Okay, um, so we got a motion on the table to continue to the March seventeenth, seven PM in this room, planning commission meeting.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone opposed? In that case, the motion carries, um, so I will leave the record open. And that is the last thing on the agenda for now. So, time to adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's over. Give us some motivation to get done earlier, agree with everything I ask you to.
Yes.
Trying to appeal to your better angel friend.
Very good, kids.
Thank you.